Okay, I am going to be the acting chairman of the planning board today. Peter Rushton is not here and George Seal is going to take the do the paperwork part of it as we go along. And it's 10:02 and we're beginning the meeting. We've got three applications today. First one being the Palmas and down through in the application. Let's see, this is at 33 Gables End, Belgrade on Great Pond. Residential property. And they proposed to add a second floor over the living room for, let's see, I'm going to expand this, master bedroom and bath. Two bedrooms will remain the same and one will go, one bedroom will be lost. Go to the stairs. But adding the new bedroom, my understanding is you'll have the same number of bedrooms when you finish it just when you started. Okay. Septic system was new in 2010. Thousand gallon capacity. See. Oh, purchase, property was purchased on in October of 2020. I would note that a property that is purchased after 2018 will need a copy of the septic system inspection that would have taken place as part of this sale. Total lot area is 5,000, 8,560 square feet and it's all in the shoreline zone. Square footage of unvegetated surfaces, including parking lots, driveways, structures, 1,690 feet. And the total area cleared of openings, cleared openings of woody vegetation, 6,562 square feet. Total of structures on the property is one. And that will remain the same with this just being an addition on top of the existing structure. Present square footage is 768. The proposed square footage is 188. That 188 would not actually count toward the square footage because it's over top of existing square footage. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. So, Gary, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you have anything that you or do you want to?
No, um, question for Steve. Steve, you and I measured the height of that structure. What did we determine the total height was going to be when you were done?
Oh, God.
I know we measured it and you was under the 20, you was under.
We measured it by, by rows of siding.
We counted the rows of siding.
Yeah. I don't recall, I thought it, I thought you had it by about six or eight feet clear and I can't remember Gary, I'd be shooting from the hip.
I know we did and I know we measured it, I just don't see it written on here.
Yeah, we definitely measured it. And again, I know we, I know we were clear, I just don't know how much by how much.
Well, if, if the board chooses to issue the permit, we will ask them to put a condition on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns with the app, the projects that there was no way to tell.
I know we measured it, him and I measured it together and the realtor's here.
And that, that height limitation would be 25 feet.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I guess I'd open it up to the board if they have any, discuss the project and see where we're going. I know I've got a couple of comments, but I'll let the board members go first. Yeah, go ahead, George.
So I really only had two questions and one we just talked about, that is, you know, does it meet the maximum height limitation in the ordinance of 25 feet on the lake shore side since it's within 75 feet of the lake? Secondly, would be, at least I don't see it and you'd mentioned this too, Rich, was a inspection of the septic system when, when the property was purchased.
Yeah.
Which is a requirement, a prerequisite to us being able to issue a permit.
Mr. De Palma, did you, you know whether that was?
I thought I had it, I thought I included it in the package.
I thought you did too, but I don't see it.
I know I have it and maybe it just didn't print out. But I know Gary told me I needed to have it and I do, I do have a copy of it, it's not a big deal, but I thought I included it as a, as a requirement for the package.
We have it right there with you.
And that's in Tewksbury at our house.
It might, oh, I don't have that computer with me.
Well, if you, if you're hurrying, you might get it before we're done. I only asked because I was just, you know, going to ask you to read what, what it found.
If we don't have it available, I see that again as another condition before the project can move forward if we approve the project.
Yeah, I thought there was also, I thought there was some spots in the application itself that it asked for a certain, what, what the downs or flow was. And I thought I wrote that in right off of the inspection, but I definitely have the inspection report. And, and I can easily provide that to you.
All right. Sarah, Georgia, those are the only questions you had, correct?
Yeah, yes.
You have any? No, now the only thing, all this thing that I had here is if we approve the project, we'll have our standard condition that the erosion control, taking care of the roof runoff, that DEP best management practices being carried out as part of the project. Other than that, I don't see anything that would prevent us from approving the project. And as Georgia, Sarah has heard discussion that I guess those are the three items that I have that, or that we've brought together that need to be taken care of. And I can foresee or that probably, well, up to the board, but I think that those three things can be dealt with as a condition to beginning the project.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as long as it's conditioned such that we have them in hand prior to the start of construction.
Right, right. Sarah, will you say something?
Yeah, you sure want to recap here. So we, we're looking, we're waiting for an inspection report.
Yep. Septic system inspection report.
With the septic system. And does he remember who he did it with?
The home inspection or the inspection report, well, it was one and the same, right?
One of the, the septic system was probably separate from the home inspection report with, that's not an issue to us. I suspect it was a different individual, but it could be the same.
I think it was, I mean, they had the, they had the holes dug and I remember, I remember sticking my head in there and looking at it and he told me awesome great stuff about all the things about it that I can understand. But, um, I, I think it was, I think it was done at the same time.
Could be. Gary, have you had any situations where a home inspection and then the septic inspection was done by the same people?
Well, I've seen cases where the home inspector brings along a septic inspector with him when he goes to the site. And Steve, you mentioned that you wrote something on here, you did, it says proprietary device, H20 bed, which is, which is something that you can drive on, so it's under your driveway, I assume.
Yes, it is, yep.
In a thousand gallon capacity tank.
Yeah, that was, I.
We still need the report though.
I might actually have the report.
I could have swore you gave it to me, but I don't seem to see it.
I might, it might be an email form that I've had to forward, I don't, I know I saved it to my computer at home, but I might still have it.
Yeah.
That would be fine. Sarah was on, now I'll go back to George. Did you have another comment, Sarah?
Yes, so we're, we're missing for three items and the height on the shoreline, on the southern shoreline and inspection report and deceptive report. Home inspection report.
Now, the erosion control.
Stormwater.
Yeah, stormwater.
That's management practices.
Do I have to do anything with that or is that something my contractor handles or is there an action for me to there?
We will be sending you a copy of the DEP best management practices. It's probably the contractor that will do it, but you, there's nothing to say that you could not. Basically, it, most people use a stone line trench at the ripids to collect the water and then it runs off or soaks in. We don't want erosion happening at, from the runoff coming off the roof, that's basically.
Understood.
Yeah. George, you were going to say something in there as well.
It couldn't have been very important because I lost my train of thought. Well, it could have been, but I still lost my train of thought.
All right.
Oh, I know what it was, I, I wanted to just get a clarification from Gary, I, I want to make sure I got the right end of the stick here. This is an existing system, right? It, it isn't a new system.
No, it's not new.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I, I just wanted to make sure, there was something that you said that I maybe questioned that. Thanks.
It does say it was new in 2010.
Oh, it does, where was that?
Let's see. Where it says existing sewage disposal system of type and capacity, it says blue 2010.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
I guess unless you have other questions, Sarah and George, I think we can probably go down through the.
Okay, I do have the, I have the inspection here. Jason Lammeru, our main inspection did it?
And can you tell us? I, I guess, I guess we're still going to want to copy that, correct?
Yeah. I'll get that to you, Gary, do I send that to you or add somebody else on distribution?
You can send it to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you spell for me the last name, please? Jason.
Home inspector?
Yeah.
Sure. L A M.
Yeah.
O R E A U.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
George, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that the next step in this process is to go through the the list of items that must be determined to either meet or not meet?
Yeah, yeah, to go through the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Yeah.
And then, and then at the end of that, we'll take a vote on, well, during the course of that, we'll come up with the language for the special conditions in addition to the standard stormwater one and, and then have a final vote.
Yep, yeah, okay. So, George is the one that's going to be letting us, essentially telling us what the findings are, not the findings, but what the items are that we are finding. Go ahead, George.
So, just for the sake of completing that form, which is entitled, findings of fact and conclusions of law, which we have to do with each one of these. So it stands up the scrutiny if ever appealed. And also gives us a legal basis for our decision in one way or the other. The first item is, you know, the, is will the project maintain its safe and helpful conditions? And I'll just read this first one because, in full, because all the remaining ones are similar. By a vote of, you know, fill in the blank, the board found the standard was, was not met and, and the basis for that. And so I would make a motion that that the standard was met with the condition that the subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection report that is required by the ordinance be provided to the code enforcement officer prior to the start of construction.
Sarah, you're going to have to be, since
Second.
Secondly, the chairman doesn't see them, so you're going to be a lot of seconds just like today. Oh, here, we need a vote. Just Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I'm going to guess as well, three.
Will not result in water pollution to surface waters. Board found the standard was, was not met. I'd make a motion that was met with the condition that stormwater be managed in accordance with DEP best management practices.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Three, three, nothing, and any affirmative again.
Number three is will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. I'd make a motion that board found the standard was met again based on a condition that of the wastewater, subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection being provided to the CGO prior to the start of construction.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, starting with Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Again, three, nothing, and any affirmative.
Just for everybody's information, I should point out that because we have the bare minimum of board members here, if any one of us should vote against something, it doesn't pass, even though it's a majority vote. Next item was will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. I would make a motion that the standard is met.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Those in favor, Sarah?
Yes.
Vote, yeah, okay, George?
Yes.
And you vote yes as well, again, three, nothing.
The next item is will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. I would make a motion that the standard has been met.
Second.
Good, second, and I just, I guess I've been failing to ask if there's a discussion, but if there is, jump in. Here's one issue that I think I will mention to the De Palmas that based on the existing amount of cleared opening you have on the lot. And I know this project won't affect that because you're just building on top, but the clearing that is taking place on property already is at, well, it's, I assume it's all illegal, but you won't be able to make, create any more cleared opening in the forest or canopy or the, you know, tree-like, shrub-like structures that, that opening cannot be further increased. So, we're going to vote on that. Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes, as well for me. Again, three, zero. Affirmative.
Rich, I failed to mention that in each one of these, there's standard language that will go in as part of the basis for our finding and, and it reads, based on, that'll be based on the material submitted in the public record.
Okay.
I should have noted that, but I didn't. The, see, the next item, number six is will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. I would make a motion that the standard has been met.
Second.
Second.
Sarah? Any discussion? If not, we'll start with Sarah.
Yes.
Yes. George?
Yes.
And yes, here as well. Again, three, nothing, affirmative.
Number seven, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. I would make a motion that this standard has been met.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, no, just any discussion? Sarah? Time to vote.
Yes.
George?
Yep, yes.
And this here. Three, nothing, any affirmative once again.
Number eight is a list of all the different performance standards in the ordinance and I'll just read, I think we can handle these en masse and I'll just take out a couple that. See, is there any? So I'll, we'll deal with water quality separately since that might involve a condition likewise with the septic disposal system and stormwater runoff. And the other items are that we, maybe we can deal with all at one time. Our minimum lot standards, principal and accessory structures, setbacks, square footage, et cetera. Campgrounds, which are not applicable in this case. Individual private campsites, which again is not applicable, commercial and industrial uses, that's not applicable. Parking areas, that's not applicable. Roads, driveways, signs, mineral exploration. Not applicable, essential services not applicable. I believe agriculture is not applicable in this application. Timber harvesting is not applicable. Clearing or removal of vegetation, hazard trees, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, revegetation requirements, erosion and sedimentation control, shoreline stabilization, soils, historical and archaeological sites and resource protection. I would make a motion that in all those cases where it's applicable, still applicable, that the evidence in the record indicates that they've met the standards.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes, here as well, three votes in favor and none against.
So there, there are three that, as we've already found require conditions of approval, special conditions of approval. One is stormwater runoff. The second, and, and that would be DEP best management practices. The reference to that, implementing that, the second is septic disposal systems that would be the submission of the inspection report by a certified inspector. And the third is water quality and again, that would be based on a special condition with the submission of, with the stormwater best manage, implementing DEP best management practices for stormwater management. So I would make a motion to approve all three of those items as being met under the standards of the ordinance.
Second.
All those, Sarah, we're going to vote on it now. You? George?
Yes.
Yes, here as well. Three, nothing on that particular vote.
Yeah, so we've approved the application as meeting all the performance standards with the conditions that were noted.
Okay.
And so now the next item for us is conditions of approval needed to meet the required Belgrade shoreline zone ordinance findings. The first that we've already referenced is and this is basically a standard condition of approval and I'll just read it for everybody's benefit, particularly the De Palmas. Managed stormwater runoff from newer expanded structures in accordance with section 15I of the Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance and Maine Department of Environmental Protection best management track practices as outlined in the conservation practices for homeowners publication. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. I have some suggested language for the two other conditions that we're going to need. And Rich, if you want me to, I'll, I'll just read those off.
Why don't you, yeah, is, is this being done in a form of a motion?
No, not yet.
Yes, listen, tell us what we need.
Yeah, at least, unless you want it to be. The, so with regard to the subsurface wastewater disposal system and, you know, tell me if you want something different or more. Provide subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection report as required by, and I was going to put in the section number. I don't have it right in front of me, but prior to the start of construction.
Yes.
And, and I was going to have that go to Gary, so provide to the code enforcement officer the subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection report prior to the start of construction. So that would be our second condition of approval. And the third would be, and I'm not sure if I got this correct based on our earlier discussion, but the maximum height of the structure may not exceed 25 feet. I didn't know if you wanted it that way or you want the maximum height to be presented, provided to Gary.
My thought is that your first, just that it's limited 25 feet, I think would be satisfactory.
Right, I, I take it, we may not have the exact measurement, but we're pretty confident that can be accomplished. I mean, you know, I, I just want, yeah, is that right for, that's a question for the De Palmas, I guess, and Gary?
Yeah, should we add to that condition that it has to be on the shoreline side?
Well, that, that certainly something that we need to and should mention through the De Palmas that that is that the height measurement is measured from the downhill or the lower slope rather than, you know, the uphill. You don't measure from the highest part, it's measured from the low part. And that's something I noticed in a couple of our applications today, other than yours, we have to deal with.
Yeah, so it includes the, I think yours is on posts, but it would include the height of the, of the posts at the lake. of the, of the posts at the lake side of the building.
Yeah, that's where we measure it from.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we.
Sometimes a point of confusion.
Yeah. Okay, we got our conditions in hand. Do we have a motion to, in terms of acting on the application with those conditions?
So should we have two conditions or we have four?
There's three, I think.
Three. Yeah, you want me to go over them again, sir?
Very quick, if you could, I'm sorry.
Sure. So the fir, the first would be to manage stormwater runoff from the structure in accordance with DEP best management practices laid out in their publication, conservation practices for homeowners. The second condition would be to provide the code enforcement officer Gary with the subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection report prior to the start of construction. And the third would be that the maximum height of the structure may not exceed twenty five feet.
We, we don't need the home inspection report in that?
No, we don't. No, you know, that's just, you know, basic consumer protection, but it's not a requirement of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, Gary, go ahead.
If you look at the diagrams, the drawings that Hammond has provided, on the elevation, it says scale one inch equals a quarter equals foot. So that might give you your heights right there.
Do you?
Which places I want, Gary, I was trying to try to figure it out like that and I couldn't make it.
No, we didn't, we need the original plan, the right scale to be able to do that.
Oh, that's not gonna, that's, no, right, this won't work. I can see though. Yeah, I thought it had the existing height. I can see what the new height is gonna be. It's, it's an eight wall.
Yeah.
But you're right, we don't have it. Okay.
So that'll be part of.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion in terms of the approval of the project? Approval or denial?
I'll make a motion to approve the project with the conditions previously listed.
Second it.
Second, okay. Any further discussion before our vote? Okay, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we've approved the project with three conditions. And your app, your permit will be, you'll receive that in the mail. It will include attached to it, the, the DEP best management practices pamphlet. And we'd ask to make sure that whatever is necessary to provide the town as part of these conditions, you do so. And other than that, I think we're done dealing with your application and good luck and no addition.
Yeah, thank you very much. And that gets mailed to our, I'll say our, our permanent residents. Or does it get mailed to our Belgrade address?
I believe if you want it to the permanent residents, we can do that. I assume that's where you want it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And, and how long is the permit? Is there a statute on the permit as far as how long it's, it lasts?
It lasts for a year for you to get a substantial start on the project, which is thirty percent of the project. Cost of the project, yeah.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great rest of your day.
Thank you, stay safe everyone.
Yes, you too.
Okay, so we dealt with the first project, the second project, I gotta get, find it. As Adams project, what I don't know is is that, how do you pronounce that core? Oh, you're muted, Adam.
All right, cool R.
Cool R, okay. I guess I'll bring this to Gary first and then we'll go down through the application. Do you have anything you want to provide as part of the description of the application and what they're doing, other than what is on the application?
Well, they wanted, you're gonna raise the existing house, correct, Adam?
No, there's, there's no house there right now.
Oh, it's a vacant lot.
Vacant lot, so it will be all new construction.
Okay, so he wants to construct a new home.
Yep, okay. So anyway, Gary, we, Adam is the contractor in this particular case and I know the application included a authorization from the landowner. Location of the property is three seventeen Wanzar Lane. Map thirty nine fourteen, it's on Great Pond. Zone Limited Residential. Supposed to build a new year round home. Existing septic system type and capacity, oh, it'll be new because there's no building on, no development on the property, correct?
Yes.
Present number of bedrooms is zero. I know you don't have these filled out on here. We do need to know the number of bedrooms that will be part of this project.
Three bedrooms.
Three.
Wasn't.
It wasn't filled out, but we.
Oh, it says, yes, it says right above existing sewer, new three bedroom, right on the permit.
Okay.
I just didn't carry it down to that line.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, great.
Okay. When was the property purchased? I'm not sure that's.
About a month ago.
I'd say it's really, that section deals really with the septic system inspection.
Yeah, there's nothing there now, right?
Alright, yeah, I just think it's lost and nothing there.
The lot area, close to an acre is thirty eight thousand two hundred and fourteen feet. Lot area in the shoreline zone is twenty one thousand five hundred and thirty one. Square footage of unvegetated surface is, I believe that's three thousand seven hundred and ten. Total area to be, of cleared opening is five thousand square feet. Number of structures on the lot, is that a number of structures on the lot now or is it, we, oh, actually it was undeveloped, so it'll be.
Right, it'll be one.
Okay, yeah. Present square footage, none, and the end square footage is twelve hundred square foot footprint, assume that's feet. And perhaps you can describe, I'm having a hard time reading the rest of it. Does it say deck?
Yeah, it's, it's twelve hundred square foot footprint and then the decks at three seventy five is twenty one forty four living space.
Okay, alright, I got you. Okay. Open up to planning board discussion. If you have anything, Adam, that you want to address to the board before we start deliberating on it?
No, everything's pretty much there. It's full survey and it seems to sit fit within all the requirements. But no, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay. Planning board members, you have any questions, comments, concerns on the application?
Sarah, why don't you go first?
So I think this, this is obviously a forty by thirty basically structure. And it, it looks like it's a three story?
It's, it sits inside of a hill, so it'd be a daylight walkout and like on the roadside, you'd literally walk right into the first floor and then it has, you know, that, which is the, I call a second story would be the two bedrooms upstairs, that little bathroom, so chalet, so it's, I call it a two story with a half finished daylight basement, walkout basement.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah. So the height, the height of the, the, the daylight goes to the lake?
Yes, yeah, the daylight side's on the lake side.
Okay, so, so when we measure the height of the whole thing will be from the bottom of the basement all the way to the top? I'm, I'm new, Adam, I wanna make you aware, I'm new to the board, so I'm rolling as we go.
Yeah, okay, but it's an appropriate question, Sarah, and my understanding and looking to your question is that the height of the building and the application or the project paperwork was to the upper side of the structure and it really needs to be measured from the downhill side. And I believe it's one foot nine inches too tall to be meet the twenty five foot height limitation. I said, sorry, I jumped in, I guess, but I, I assume that that's where you were getting at.
Yeah.
Rich?
Gary?
The height restriction's thirty five, beyond, beyond the hundred.
Yeah. It, it is not twenty five.
When, when did that change?
Hasn't, that's the problem. It's been the same since the nineteen nineties. So if you go to, if you go to the principal accessory structures for conforming structures in fifteen, fifteen, it reads principal or accessory structures and expansions of existing structures shall not exceed twenty five feet in height.
That is, that's something that George was able to pick out in reviewing last night. I had the understanding myself that we were at thirty five feet when we made the amendments, but the ordinance does not say thirty five feet, it says twenty five.
And we've got. I'm almost positive it used to say thirty five.
It, the, the state chapter one thousand says thirty five, but this hasn't said thirty five since I've been on the board since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, alright.
I know it's been issued in past applications, because we've had the same discussion, but the but, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, I got, I got a question, it's mostly for the board members. So what is the reason behind setting up a twenty five feet high capacity, no more than that? What, what is the reasoning behind that?
I, I would say that the reason behind a height limitation is preserving the natural beauty of the shoreline or what have you. We, the state did not want huge structures in shoreline or I don't believe it was established at all because of like fire hazard and fire trucks and things like that. I think it was pretty much a aesthetic issue.
Well, you know, that's a point because if there's a fire in the, I can see that, if there's a fire in the shoreline and it be, the, the event is higher than twenty five feet, I don't think a fire truck can reach them. That's, that, that's just for my information. Again, then the question will be going moving forward, trying to see if we can help Mr. Gordon here. Is there any way that they, that we have a waiting process to waive that requirement?
No, we don't. Would be, we as a planning board have no authority to provide any waivers in the shoreline zone or variances. That would need a variance approval from Board of Appeals. The, you know, I, I don't know where, I can tell you that from the deep state perspective, setting it at thirty five feet, that was in my mind clearly an aesthetic issue. Didn't want eighty five foot structures. And this, this is being in residential areas, so like not, not lake or ocean where you've got industrial activities. That limitation does not apply toward the general development zone. But why the town of Belgrade originally selected twenty five feet for the height limitation? I do not know. I just suspect that, again, that one, it's, it could be partly the fire department. It could have been, you know, again, the issue of aesthetics where you have a lot of nonconforming structures that don't have any vegetation between the shoreline and the structure. So the bigger the structure, the more obtrusive, if you will, the structure would be. But I was not on the board when that original twenty five foot was established back in, George said, at least as far back as the eighties.
Go ahead.
Yes, sorry. I was under the same greens, Gary, twenty five feet, hundred or out of that was thirty or five.
You're coming through garbled. Is anybody else getting garbled?
Yeah, I do.
Why can't, I can't make Adam out?
Yeah, okay.
It's probably my internet, I tried it on my shot. I understand, Gary says the twenty five feet and the hundred, out of a hundred.
Hey, hey folks.
The higher.
Hey folks, so maybe, maybe if we all, maybe if we all muted, Adam's audio might be a little clear. So let's, let's all mute and see if, Adam, if you can explain that again.
I guess what I was saying is, going back to my Gary, that's about as little as a hundred feet. Now that hundred, that's thirty or five. And that's kind of what I think a lot of the permits in the past has done, is that measure from the low side is average. All these places, you know, you have a daylight walkout, so that adds eight feet.
So, hey, Adam, you're, you're still, you're still really garbled. Let me, let me grab a, a phone number for you to call real quick and then you can at least do your audio by phone.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on one sec.
Anthony, maybe he lowers us volume over there, he might work.
Try that, Adam, if you lower your volume, see if that, that might help a little bit.
Any better?
Yes.
So I guess what, I was under the understanding that twenty five foot was within the hundred and out of the hundred was the thirty five. Is that measured from the low side or is it the average? Because it's literally the rest of this building's gonna be at grade walkout. You know, like the first floor is pretty much flush. You look at the topo of the piece of property, that deck, if you're looking at the front view on that left side is, you know, only a foot off the ground, maybe.
Yeah, if, if, if you look at the language in the ordinance, it, it speaks to, may not exceed and, and and the measurement has historically always, and, and this is the guidance we've gotten from DEP over the years, is again, we're talking maximum, so it has to be at the lower, at the lowest elevation to the highest elevation. Rich, you're muted, Rich.
How's that?
It was better, yeah.
Okay. Uh, the definition of the height of the structure is the vertical distance between the mean original grade prior to construction at the downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure, including chimneys, steeples, excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas and similar appurtenances that have no floor areas. The, I would say that, it does say the mean original grade. So if you had a structure that you have the the original grade, say it slopes at an angle, not toward the water, but slopes at an angle across the front, you would take that mean original grade across the front. And that might have been where you were Adam, saying that some of the structure one side is much higher than the other side. I don't know if that's what you were saying or not, but that would, that could affect the height of the structure.
Right, it's literally gonna go from eight feet to nothing. So that's the four feet, if you take the mean of that, I mean, obviously wherever that door walkout's gonna be, eight feet. But if, if you're looking at, what says the north elevation, which is actually the front, the water side, you know, it's gonna be essentially the grade will be right up to the corner of that foundation wall, and the other side's gonna be almost exposed, so then you're talking four feet. So then we'd be under that twenty-five.
I just want to make sure I, I understand Rich and Adam, so let me just first say, the contours on the site plan don't go from the, you know, it's down to the lake, that, that's, the contours are parallel to the lake. And it sounds like what's important here is the average or mean perpendicular to the lake. Is that what your guys are talking about?
No, it was parallel to the lake, in other words, if the land is not perfectly flat at the very front of the structure, but is, say, two feet higher on one side than the other side.
Oh, okay.
Mean original grade would be one, it would be one, if it was two foot high on one side versus the ground level, the other side.
So, Adam, what you were saying is, and, and this, I think, is what the site plan shows, is that the elevation in the north corner on the lakeside is higher than the elevation of the well, southwest corner, I guess.
Right, it, it's about four feet, I don't know if, what you got for the survey, but if you look from the one corner, it goes from the ninety-nine to the hundred and four, from one corner of the building to the other, it's almost sits like right in a hole. Like, if you look at the grade lines, you see how they all make like a V right on the corner of that house?
Right.
About four, five, I think about five feet of difference from one side to the other of elevation.
So, if it was four-foot difference from one side to the other and the mean original grade would be, assuming this is original grade we're talking about, it would be two, we subtract two off the, it wouldn't, put it this way, it'd be two foot higher than what it should, then, yeah. The lower side is zero, the upper side across the front is four. The elevation is treated as being two under that definition.
Right, it'd be two-point-five, so it put me under the twenty-five feet.
If you're at five, yeah.
Right, because that's, I mean, hence the surveyor out there, difference from that corner across is the five feet, and it's all natural what's there now.
Yeah.
So that's like right on the money of that twenty-five feet.
Do you guys, the rest of the planning board, understand where Adam is at?
No, I, I don't, because the figures on, on the drawings that I have, the profiles from uh, Barasa indicate, you know, without the, without the taking, taking out the, the foundation and, and, and sunlight basement, we got twenty-six feet, four inches of height.
Where are you pulling that measurement from?
I'm pulling it
The ground, if you look on west number two, to your roof is seventeen feet, and then there's only five feet after that. Is that?
Looking at, I'm looking at east number two.
See.
I have to admit, I had to look at this through a magnifying glass so I could read it. So I had to come to twenty-six feet, four inches, I had a height of seventeen feet and nine foot, four inches. And that's, and that doesn't even bring me to the peak.
Right, we, we still have the pitch of the roof in there.
So from the first floor to the actual ridge line itself is twenty-two feet.
Okay.
And then if we're gonna do, take away two-point-five feet, it's nineteen. To make that work, that'd be a five-and-a-half-foot basement to walk out, so I mean, if it comes down to deleting the walkout basement, then I mean, I, I don't think I can shave.
It may be, Adam, that I've, I've misinterpreted the, the numbers on, on that same drawing, each number two, because on the right-hand side, it says level two, nine feet, four inches. Then the next elevation up is seventeen feet.
Yeah, that'd be about right, because you have two, two eight-foot floors with a one-foot floor system, and it's a four pitch, that's five feet from that top plate to the ridge line. So from the first floor, I'll have twenty-two feet, and I thought it was the mean, they take it of the entire building, because literally that building is level, you know, all the way across with, which is actually gonna be the north side. So the difference of, you know, be four feet of difference, not five feet of diff, you know, two and a half feet of difference.
I guess I'm still confused on what the total height is of the two-story structure to the, from the from the basement to the peak on the lake shore side, on the downhill side, because these figures seem to indicate it's twenty-six feet, four inches.
Twenty-nine feet.
So, Adam, reiterate this with me. The, the picture that is a two-point-one, okay, from the pictures, and we can see, in the bottom of it, we can see the west side. Okay, I'm trying to help you out on this, I, I wish I would be a civil engineer to get this knocked out, and this is gonna be beautiful chalet in the lake. So, so from the, the line that says seventeen feet, on the, on the line on the roof, on the edge of the roof, to the, to the top, you said that is about four feet and a half?
Uh, it's five feet and four pitch.
Five feet, so it's thirty-one, it's thirty-one feet completely from the front. Because it's, it's, it's a total of seventeen, plus, plus the five feet is twenty-two.
That would be thirty feet, yeah.
Plus, plus the nine inches, the nine, the nine feet on the other side is thirty-one feet from the, from the front side of the lake to the peak. So I guess the question is, can you, can you, my thought will be, can you somehow have a basement that kind of, you're gonna, you're gonna have, have to sink it somehow? And you walk in from it up to the outside?
Right. Right, I know what you're saying, but you wouldn't be able to. So the front corner to the back corner, which is the contour of the property, is eight feet in difference. So the mean of that would be four, which would put me at twenty-six feet. So I'm at thirty. So I just have to get rid of the walkout basement and fill that side. Because I mean, having that second floor doesn't add any height difference, because that ridge line's all the way the same, all the way back to the twelve-twelve pitch.
Now, Adam, let me, you said something about getting rid of the walkout basement. The if you I assume that the, the uphill side of that structure, what would you be doing, essentially getting rid of the walkout placement and you know, you're not gonna put the house into the bank, correct? Without the
I don't think I can drop the house into the bank. I just get rid of the door and the windows on the water side and fill that across there. Instead of putting my retaining walls on the side, I just go across the front that four feet.
Well, does that solve the problem?
Solves the height problem.
How so?
So I'm taking now, I gotta dig out that whole bank, which is all natural, all the way across there. Like, the back height, you know, is the twenty-two feet, I essentially carry that around it. Like, this sits, just the way it sits, it sits like in a natural hole, so it's obviously it's a little bit more slope towards, towards the water, but if that's the issue, that's where it's to be measured from. You know, we carry that retaining wall around, so you wouldn't have a lock.
So are, are you saying that you essentially have a a foundation that instead of being seven or eight foot tall, would be four feet?
Probably be six feet or four feet, whatever it works out to. Or it'd be like a foundation that's in the ground, you know, that would be not actual walkout space.
But to keep the rest of the
So if you had it, if you maintained it at the way it is now, you'd essentially have to put, say you maintain the basement at eight feet or whatever height it is, part of that basement would be in the ground.
Right.
And you'd have say, four feet extending above the ground on
To make that twenty-five foot.
Yeah, he can, he can only do three feet above the ground to do twenty-five feet. Now, let me, let me throw this out there, I don't know if this will work for you, Adam. I know that personally you want your, your daylight base, basement towards the lake. I'm not sure that you can do it towards one of the sides of the chalet. It's a beautiful home that you're building there.
Right. So what your suggestion is, put the daylight side on, let's, let's just call it the west side, so when you measure.
I mean, I'm trying to think of putting the daylight either on the south or the north side of it, which is, is kind of screwy, because the idea is that you're gonna have a sunset in the evenings there, and you can see it from your open basement.
Right, I mean, the, the daylight would be nice to have, just because it makes sense for that piece of property, but if that's gonna be an issue with the height restriction, then I won't make it as a daylight. I'll have to just drop everything down and cut the basement down to whatever it needs to be to hit that twenty-five feet.
Okay, and Sarah, you said you only have three foot of basement above the ground, I think you're getting at that at seventeen-foot height plus three feet, that would be above ground, would give you seven, I mean, twenty, and then Adam said there's five feet from the edges of the roof, but peak, peak to the soffit up there. Yeah, that, I would say that that would be, I think in my mind, it would be permissible. At that point, you'd be at twenty-five feet, but it would be an in-ground basement with three-foot elevation above the ground.
Right.
Yeah. Planning board, where are we at, at this point, in terms of if Adam wanted to do that? Do we need to have a reset middle, or, I know we need an amendment to the application? How is best, do you see us moving in that direction? Or being able to prove something along that line?
Yeah. I guess I would want to see a revised profile drawing. Since we're making a fundamental, you know, we're talking about a fundamental change to the structure rather than simply handling it by a condition, but we may want to defer on this, a final decision on this until we see what else, what other questions we have and what else may be missing from the application, and then decide whether we need to table this or, or what.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's just say at this point, we have an issue with the height of the structure as proposed in the ordinance. And let's, let us talk about any other issues that we have with the project. I know I have one, but I'll let the board as a whole, our other two members send their issues first.
Sarah, did you have other items?
No, I don't.
Okay, yeah, I, I, Adam, I have a, a number of questions and, and items I wanted to ask about. In, in terms of things that are, appear to me, at least I don't have, missing from the application is the approved permit for the wastewater disposal system, I don't see that in the application. So we don't have that.
It's in there. I had one right in front of me, signed off by Gary.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have it.
I, I don't think I had it either.
I don't either.
So there, there's one item, the other is, is this a lot, well, just to be clear, these are two not-conforming lots that are being combined, right?
No.
No, it's just
One existing lot that has a road, right-of-way road running through it.
I'm sorry, I'm confused with a different application. Oh, well, no, I'm not, wait a minute, so isn't the septic system going on the lot that's across the street?
Right, if it's one lot.
Oh, it is one lot, it's not two lots?
Yeah, it's all bought as one lot. It just has the, right, as a road goes through, it says not, determines, it's never really been defined, but in the town maps and the deeds, it's, it's one lot that has the right-of-way through it.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, so it's still a not-conforming lot, though, because it's what, thirty-eight thousand square feet and change?
And one hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, and one hundred feet of frontage. The and, that was sort of an aside, sorry to go down that rabbit hole, the well, the one thing, so the question is, is that well, the one thing, so the question is, is that all trees now and, and vegetated? Okay, so a fair amount of clearing is gonna have to take place, and that's what the five thousand square feet represents on the, your application, you're gonna have to do five thousand square feet of, of clearing?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, um, uh, you know, from the site plan, I, I can't really tell what is proposed for being cleared or not, but, um, we do have the five thousand square feet as a maximum.
Right.
Um, and then some more minor questions, um, the, uh, the walkway down to the lake, what, how's that gonna be constructed, is that just like bark mulch, or is that a, um?
Yeah, typically we just do erosion control mulch. And just make it meandering to go down.
Okay. The, um, there, are there any ditching along the driveway, uh, going down the, that grade?
No, it's pretty flat where that is, like, the top section of the lot where you pull into the house is almost, you know, dead flat, I guess, I think, it's, I think it's hard to see on the actual survey, I dropped off a full size, but I'm sure they don't scan a twenty-four, thirty-six.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, we always end up with the eight by eleven, and hence why, hence that.
No, there's, that's actually pretty flat there, and it kind of naturally goes down over the hill, which wouldn't be touching any of that, too, like, is like a runoff ditch down there already existing, which is actually, I believe on the neighbor's property.
Okay. And, and then the last item, I noticed, uh, you're, you know, you're proposing for the, um, primary structure, the, for the struct, for the camp, the house itself, uh, a, um, crushed stone drip edge, uh, uh, you know, uh, drip line, uh, edge, uh, trench, um. How about, uh, for the driveway, what were your thoughts on how to handle that? That you wanted to handle that?
I mean, I said, that's pretty much flat, so it's gonna be crushed bluestone, so it's just gonna be permanent, soak in, and most of that, uh, pitch is, if you're looking at the driveway, it's gonna, the left side's the high side, and it's gonna slowly go into the right, and it's all natural vegetation that's gonna stay there on the right.
Okay, so is it, are you just gonna take advantage of sort of the natural infiltration?
Right. Correct, yeah, if you can, it's hard to kind of see where the driveway is, the rest of that, there's all not gonna get touched, and it's, it's fairly level, there's not a lot of ground cover there, it's a lot, you know, a couple larger trees, but it's fairly open. I mean, at some point in time, someone probably cut some little stuff out of there, maybe twenty, thirty years ago, and just hasn't grown back, because it's not, not, not a lot of light that gets through there.
All right, thanks. Those were my questions.
Okay, I just got a, a couple of, uh, uh, quick questions. Your, uh, client doesn't own any of the.
I actually, I actually own this.
Oh, you do?
I own Kular as well, it's just, it's one of our holding companies for, so the houses I build and sell, we run it through there, instead of running it through my construction company. So no, I don't own any of that ones next door.
So do you have a letter of authorization to represent them?
I do.
Uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure that if, if, uh, and I don't know when the lots were created. Uh, I mean, obviously, was, uh, were they a hundred feet wide?
Yeah, back in the sixties or seventies, I mean, it's before the shore end zone, because the house literally next door sits like five feet from the lake.
Yeah, okay. I just, uh, wanted to, if they were owned by you, and they're both a hundred feet wide and, and one or more are vacant, they would have had to been combined, but.
Uh, I would have bought them in two different company names if I had the.
I like that.
All right, that, that was my question, it seems to me that we have two issues here. One is how, uh, that, that the current height is designed is, uh, too high. And I, we don't have the septic system, uh, approval in front of us, anyway. Uh, Gary, do you know, do you have that? I know Adam's showing Gary's signature, is that it? So I, you've got a copy of that?
That one. Yeah, it dropped off the same day with the actual permit.
We can't hear you, Gary.
What's the permit number up in the right corner?
Uh, three, nine, one, four.
Okay.
While we're waiting for Gary, I think this issue of the septic system permit, uh, uh, can be taken care of pretty darn easily. I would ask Adam, uh, how would you like, and it doesn't mean that we're gonna proceed that way, but how would you like to address the height of the structure in terms of getting an approval from us? Would you want to amend it and bring it back to us? Uh, we could, I don't know what the other board members think about the condition, uh, that would limit it to twenty-five feet. Um, how to, how do, how we would put that together? Um, but let me ask you, what you would like?
I'll make a suggestion, obviously, um, I would say limited to twenty-five feet, but also tend on, pending have Andy Dunbar, the surveyor, come out and shoot that grade, and put it in writing and have Gary or someone sign off on it, so there is a record saying, okay, here's a set of plans, here's what it's gonna be, just to make sure one hundred percent establish my base grade, so I'm not over the twenty-five feet, and have that on a piece of paper that either the planning board would sign off on, or have the code enforcement officer approve that contingent on the twenty-five foot, um, restriction permit, just to save the time going back.
And if we did do that, I'd also want to make sure that we said twenty-five feet, um, on the downhill side, from the downhill side.
Of the mean, on the downhill, on the downhill side, I guess my only concern on that is, is that the lakeside or the, technically the downhill side of this house goes kitty corner, so we're going, you know, fifty, whatever, fifty-five, sixty feet on an angle and taking that difference, because the way this house actually sits, the downhill corner is like, cuts it directly in half, and it shows it right on the actual, um, on the contour lines. So I'd just like someone to de- define exactly where that's gonna be, because there's no, it's not like we're going right directly into the side of the hill, and we're gonna go from one side to the other, you know, if we're gonna go on the low side, the low side technically is a corner of this building, I do believe, and that'd be something for the surveyor to verify where that mean is, I mean, he, that's what he does, he could pick that mean out with a proper definition from the planning board.
George or Sarah?
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking.
I'm, I'm new to this whole process, so I, I would say that the ordinance and, uh, well, we have at hand, print, seem to give us, um, thirty-one feet, so I, I will feel more comfortable if I get, uh, resubmitted that drawings, and, uh, once we get that, we can, we can move, uh, to approval, I will say, I don't know. That would be my take, you guys might have deal this kind of situation differently.
Gary, if, if, for George goes, if we were to have a, uh, amended submittal, um, having us gone through the project, already, other than this particular issue, um, would that get on the next board agenda, or is it too late for that?
Is, is, I don't even know when we're gonna meet again at this point, but, uh, yeah, that should be a quick one, huh?
Yeah. I would think so. I'm not sure how we, whether the other board members would uh, vote, having not been part of the main discussion here, or whether it's still be us three. But I, I think it can be quick in the, it turns out, they'll deal with it quickly, anyway. George?
Well, just to answer your question, Rich, it would have to be just the three of us, because, uh, or that, or the alternative would be the others would have to get, you know, we'd have to go through all this again. And I'm not sure that's fair to Adam and, uh, and very, or very efficient, uh, but as long as all three of us attend that meeting, we could have sort of a subset meeting, if you will, um.
Yeah.
But not subset meeting, but the others would just have to recuse themselves or abstain, I should say.
Yeah, or, or we could meet fifteen minutes prior, or.
We, we don't even have to do that, I don't think, but it, we could, uh,
Okay.
You know, it, yeah, if, if Adam would provide, you know, uh, elevation survey, or the, um, or, or revised profile drawing to demonstrate, you know, meeting the twenty-five foot, I, I, I would think that would be more than adequate, I do think it would be most appropriate if it came back to the board rather than the Gary, I think that might be a little unfair uh, place that burden on Gary. Uh, and plus, based on Adam's desire to have something that, you know, we sign off on, uh, it meets that as well, um. I actually have another question, actually, it's for the board, um, if, if we, once we're done with this particular topic.
Oh, okay, once we're done with this, okay. Are you talking about this topic being a height, or this topic being Adam's project?
No, the height, height issue.
Okay. My, I, I hate to extend, uh, people's time on this thing, but at the same time, I'm thinking that it, agreeing with Sarah, that'd be good to have a amended application showing this, rather than, uh, doing it with some kind of condition that would maybe somewhat complicated and whatever, uh.
Right, no, I, I agree as well.
Okay. Guess, Adam, what you're hearing is that we, we were, we, I think somebody's probably gonna make an amen, uh, uh, a, uh, a motion to table the application pending clarification on the building height, uh, or amendment, uh, showing, uh, uh, building height, oh geez, there's a phone, uh, it's gonna ring for a while unless I get up and push, I'm gonna get up and push it.
Go ahead, Adam.
I just have a quick question on when you make the motion to amend it, I just want to be very clear of where or how you want to define the mean point, just so when I go to Andy Dunbar and say, okay, here's what I was asked, the mean is determined from out the lake or the low point to the high point of the downhill side of the building, I just want to make sure that when I, you know, pay him to come out and do everything, that it's gonna be exactly what you're looking for, and then I'll have, um, the guy who does my plans change the, um, the elevations to ensure that everything's one hundred percent matches up and coincides with e- each other.
Okay.
Page, I can note that.
Okay, Adam?
Yeah.
I'll try to, we're on the downhill side of the structure toward the lake. And at that corner, the front corners of the structure, if one of them happens and the natural grade is here, and then the other corner of the building, it's up by four feet. The mean original grade is two feet on the downhill side, and so you'd start your elevation measurement from that point.
Okay. Lakeside.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's exactly what the, uh, definition of height of structure that Rich read earlier on page eighty of the, uh, ordinance, if you need to refer to it. It says as well.
Yeah, I was only asking, because like I said, I think the low point on this house is actually kitty corner to the lake.
Yeah.
So that's, I just want to make sure we're gonna work off of that side, depending on how straight this thing actually sits to the lake, I think it's pretty much straight on. Uh, but that's fine, that, that works for me, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, the other issue with the, uh, septic system permit, um, Gary, did you find that, uh?
Yeah, it's right in my hand.
All right. So if you, I don't know if we even as a board need to see it, we, whether we just need to know that Gary's got it.
Yeah, this is the permit, and it's right here.
Yeah, it's like, actually, the, according to the ordinance, it has to be part of the application, so, um, since we're tabling, it looks like we're tabling this anyway. Uh, Adam could just provide it with the, uh, other material.
Yeah, okay. And we, I would want to make sure that we, uh, get this on the next agenda, so we're not pushing Adam back any further than two week period here. George, you said that you wanted to bring up an issue once we took care of the.
Yeah, well, it's, it's more of a question, and primarily for you, Rich, but, uh, for the three of us, um, and I guess the basic question is, does this meet the, uh, clearing standards? And um, how do we assure, and, and not that I don't trust Adam, but, uh, how, in this situation like this, how do we assure that the seventy-five foot, uh, buffer along the, uh, lake shore is maintained?
Actually, it's a hundred foot buffer.
Or a hundred foot buffer, excuse me. Yeah, sorry, yeah.
So you're asking that question, because the application doesn't show where the cleared.
Yeah, the site plan doesn't show it.
Maybe, Adam, you can show the cleared opening, uh, uh, in, when you resubmit, uh, or amend the application. Uh, just show the area that would be cleared under this project. And that way, we don't have to deal with it, it'll be dealt with, with the, I mean, we'll, we'll review it, but we will be giving a uh, document that shows where the clearing is, and then George's question would go away, assuming it's not in the first hundred feet.
I, I mean, we don't even build them in the hundred, I'm back to hundred and twenty-somethings, you have a patio kind of in front of it, um, because the building won't fit at that hundred foot mark, it's too wide. Um, but yeah, so I can do the canopy, I can have them draw it in with the canopy will be
Yeah.
maintained, essentially, or removed, I don't really want to look at it, it was typically with drawing what's left.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, I'd entertain a motion at this point, unless somebody, uh, has further questions.
You all said, Adam?
Yep.
I guess I'd make a motion to table the application, uh, uh, pending the submission of the three items just discussed.
Okay, and those three items were the height elevation, the clearing area, and the addition of the plumbing permit.
Yeah, for the septic system.
Yeah.
I second it.
Okay, uh, we have a, a motion and a second. George, uh, will you vote on this?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well, and I'm hoping, Adam, that when we meet in two weeks, we can get you off the agenda pretty quick.
Yeah, so, so Adam, we will commit to that, we'll put you on the May sixth agenda, and, uh, you'll be the first item under old business, so we can make quick work out of you.
Okay, thank you very much, um, one question, when do you want all this information by? What's my cutoff date for that?
So we would need this, Adam, by next Thursday at the latest. Because we will send out the packet to the planning board members the following day on Friday.
All right, so twenty-nine?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right.
Good day.
All right, yeah.
Thank you, Adam.
We'll make your, we'll make your day on May sixth.
Yeah, a better day, have a better day.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, do we have, uh, Elliot on the line somewhere? There he is.
Yes, hello, Rich.
Yes, hello, Rich.
We are on our third application today and it'll be the last one of the meeting today. Uh, let me find, get the, I gotta find the application here. All right. Is that pronounced feeder?
Yes, it is.
Pardon me?
Yes, it is Bill and Laura Feeder.
Okay. The uh, feeders from Portland, Maine. The project is located at one sixty-three Burton Woods Road. Map thirty-seven lot twenty-four. It's on Great Pond. It's in neighborhood of Pinkham Cove, correct?
Yes, it is on the east shore.
Residential property and they're proposing to demolish and replace the existing residents on the property. Existing disposal system type and capacity. Both type and capacity are unknown. Are you proposing, are they proposing to replace it with this project?
Yes.
Okay. I probably, if I'd gone down through or probably would have noticed that I probably that the permit stuff is in our application.
Yeah, no, it is.
Okay. Let's see, new bedroom, new house is gonna have three bedrooms. It was bought well before the two thousand eighteen timeframe for attaching a septic system inspection report, but that wouldn't apply anyway since it's proposing a new one. Twenty-four thousand four hundred sixty-six square feet, of which all of it is in the shoreline zone. Square footage of unvegetated surfaces is six thousand nine hundred ninety-three square feet. Total lot area cleared is fifteen thousand. See. Number, total number of structures on the lots, three. Okay. I do note that we have the authorization from the landowner for you, Elliot, to represent them through this project. Perhaps you can, Elliot, can explain or if, if you have something um, more than or at least explain what you're proposing to do, how would we give it a fact?
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to go over the site plan. The site plan shows Great Pond on the left, which is to the west. Burton Woods Road is on the east side, on the right-hand side of the plan, so north is straight up on this plan. Um, you can see the existing camp. Pretty much in the same location where the new one is going. Um, it's outlined in green. Oh, and one thing, I just want to make sure, I had sent through a revised site plan or an updated site plan. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, just above the title block, you should see a revised for sixteen twenty-twenty-one with things that I've added, underdrain notes and roof drip line infiltration. So I'm looking at that updated plan.
So that's what you sent by email to Sheila, right?
Yes. That's right.
Thank you.
So the existing camp is down at the front of the lot, the closest point is forty-four feet from high water mark. Also, right on the water, there's a, it's kind of like a boathouse, they call it the tea house. For water toys, water skis, that kind of thing. That's gonna remain, you're not touching that. Then there's a wood deck on the south side of the tea house and there's a wooden walkway that comes across the lawn up to the existing camp, that's also gonna remain. So the existing camp is gonna be torn down. And actually, you can see it's right at the property line, that north corner of the camp and the new camp will meet the ten-foot setback requirement from that north line. The, the new camp, the new house is essentially, it's gonna be the same square footage and we can go over all of the specs on that, but it's about the same size as the existing. There's a woodshed and a shed right behind the existing camp also outlined in green. And I've taken those into consideration on all of the footprint statistics, we'll go over that. Then what's highlighted in brown, the driveway down at the camp, that's existing and it's paved. We're actually gonna be eliminating some of that where the driveway approaches the south side of the new building. Because it, right now, it goes pretty much right to the existing building. Then the driveway comes uphill to the east. And what's proposed is highlighted in brown. Actually, there's an area, as you get up onto the more level part, you see I've got proposed septic leach field, that's gonna be a chamber system, which is the new septic system that's in your package. There's also just to the right of that proposed septic leach field, I've just got a note to be revegetated. That's existing gravel driveway. But we're going to relocate that slightly just to get a better approach. It's a fairly steep driveway all the way down. So instead of having like an S curve, we still do slightly, but we're flattening it out. Um, on the south side of that driveway, opposite the leach field, we're going to, there's an existing kind of a swale along the driveway now. We're gonna actually construct that swale and line it with stone. So the surface water from that upper portion of the driveway will by surface flow go toward that swale. And then at the bottom of it, where there is an existing swale that actually crosses southerly onto the southerly property. Uh, we're gonna put a stone check dam, so there'd be very little water there, but we're gonna make sure that we protect that swale area and then put a check dam at the bottom. Up at the top of the driveway by Burton Woods Road, there's like a, a parking area that extends south, that's gonna remain. So the, the construction is gonna be the leach field, the modification to the driveway coming down to the leach field. As I said, all the driveway at the bottom will stay the same and then we're gonna be moving of building the new house a little bit to the south to meet the setback. Um, one, I show a relocated shed behind the proposed house. There is a shed there now with an attached woodshed, that's just gonna be moved back slightly to give space between the new house and the woodshed, because I also need a small swale there that I'll describe. Um, the existing house I mentioned is forty-four feet from high water, the new deck corner is shown fifty-one feet, so it is slid back seven feet to the closest point. We looked at moving it back further and the limitation is the steep slope that comes down from about where the proposed septic leach field is down that steep slope to the back of the existing camp. We've pushed it back into the hill as much as I think is feasible or reasonable. Um, one thing, when we look at the house plans, Matt Morn at Hammond Lambert, he actually, he hasn't reflected that the back portion of the house is gonna be actually set into the ground. But, but we'll look at that. So the the floor of the new house is gonna be about the same as what the existing floor is. And the one noticeable difference will be the back of the house, the east side away from the lake is gonna be recessed into the ground. So the ground level will actually be halfway up that back uh, first floor wall, so we're just gonna build a higher frost wall on the back and then soil will be burned up against it. Um, the we're gonna put a new septic and pump tank just to the south of the house under the paved driveway. And then that's gonna pump up to this new chamber system. And actually, in the application, we're not sure of the system, existing system type or capacity, but that's where it is, where the new one's going. That's about all we could tell where, where it's located. Um, that'll be concrete chambers. Um, they're gonna drill a new well up in near Burton Woods Road at the south end of that little turnaround I mentioned, that little T parking area. So the the water line will come all the way down the driveway to the new house. The pump septic will come from the septic pump tank all the way up the driveway to that leach field. Um, on stormwater, in addition to this crushed stone swale along the south side of the driveway, at the house, we're gonna have foundation drain all the way around, which is typical. What we're also doing at the top of the sheet, there's one, two, three, four, there's five details, construction details. The middle one labeled underdrain. We're going to extend the crushed stone all the way to the surface on all of the underdrain. In addition to that, um, there's two areas that are kind of a orange color, one behind the house on the east side and then one at the northwest corner on the lakeside on the north side and then wraps around. On the east side, that's a shed roof and that, that back half of the building just sheds off to the east. And in that location, there's also gonna be the underdrain. But there'll be a roof drip line infiltration trench put in and that's the left detail on those five at the top. So in addition to having the crushed stone and the underdrain, it's much wider, at the top it's four feet wide, which is crushed stone. But then down one foot, there's gonna be a one-foot layer of soil filter media. So on the back of the house, all of that roof water is gonna go down through this infiltration media. Then get collecting the underdrain. At the front northwest corner of the house, um, that front portion of the house has a sloped roof that goes to the lake. But there'll be a gutter on that west drip edge facing the lake and there'll be a downspout at that northwest corner. So all of that roof water will also be directed into this infiltration filter system. So I think the combination will work well, where we have some concentrated water, we're gonna go through the infiltration filter. Where it's just the standard underdrain along the building, we are still gonna do crushed stone from the underdrain all the way up to the surface. And, and I know how well that works, um, and actually personally, when I came before the board a couple of years ago, one of, I think Rich mentioned um, having crushed stone and infiltration, which I was, I sort of have anyway on the existing, but when we did this addition, I totally filled that whole foundation trench, frost wall trench with stone down to the underdrain and it's just spectacular. You never have any water running off. In addition to that, if you can, off the southwest corner of the building, I show a four-inch underdrain extending kind of parallel to the lake toward the south property line. That's existing, that's wet, this is all lawn. But it, it gets pretty damp. And partly because this driveway coming down toward the camp, it really, that surface water sheets off and goes down onto that lawn, so that's typically wet. So what we're gonna do there is, I guess you could call it a French drain, it's gonna be the same as the underdrain around the house. We're gonna extend that underdrain to the south across the lawn. And then that does flow north into the house underdrain and that'll be the same crushed stone all the way to the surface. So it'll really collect that surface water that's coming down the hill. Then all of this underdrain system is going to go toward the lake and will be, of course, applying for permit by rule from DEP. But the house underdrain in these drip edge infiltrations in that French drain on the front will all be directed to a low area and outlet in north of the tea house, so we got positive drainage everywhere. That's the, sort of the general on the site. Down in the lower left-hand corner, I've got statistics. And what we've done is, we've taken all of the existing footprint areas and labeled them. George, even with your magnifying glass, I'm not sure you'll be able to see this, but that left-hand column existing footprint areas, I've got between zero and twenty-five feet from high water mark is three hundred and eighty-six square feet existing. That's the tea house, the tea house deck and that wooden walkway till you get back to the twenty-five foot setback.
How, how, how many square feet you say that was?
Three hundred and eighty-six. We're not making any change to that, so proposed is also gonna be three eighty-six. Oh, and also these setbacks that we're gonna be talking about, going along the north side of the north property line, I've got the twenty-five foot setback, the seventy-five and the hundred. And those dashed lines, which kind of might get lost in contours and things, they're drawn all the way across from north to south, so we've got those setbacks labeled. Then the next one is between twenty-five and seventy-five from high water mark, we've got one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet existing. And between seventy-five and a hundred, we've got five hundred and forty-nine square feet footprint existing. And that hundred foot setback stops just short of where the existing shed and woodshed are located, so those are beyond. So when the proposed footprint, we're gonna keep zero to twenty-five Azias. Between twenty-five and seventy-five, we're reducing it from the thirteen fifty down to one thousand seventy-six. And between seventy-five and a hundred, we're actually increasing from five forty-nine square feet up to seven ninety. But the total is just slightly less of what's existing from zero to one hundred. So if this is a um, non-conforming existing condition, we're not increasing the non-conformance. And the neck, the column to the right is the impervious areas, and again, I've done the same thing, existing and proposed. and proposed, and this is within the two fifty. So this is the entire lot. The two hundred and fifty foot line is just about at Burton Woods Road. So buildings existing, including decks and steps. Uh, twenty-four fifty-six. The driveway and parking areas, four thousand five hundred and twelve. And then there's an existing septic tank structure, um, which is underneath the proposed deck. I've got a label just off the end of that paved driveway toward the lake. It says deck over septic pump, remove it. Um, that's twenty-five square feet. So that total is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five square feet, total impervious within the shoreline zone, which is the entire lot. And that is twenty-eight point six percent of the lot area. Proposed, we are, I've got the buildings listed, the driveway and parking listed. The total is the same. Proposed is what it is now. So we're over the twenty percent, but we're maintaining that existing non-conformance. We're not increasing the non-conformity. Um, the last thing along these same, the environmental aspects, that kind of thing. In the notes, which are just above the graphic scale. Um, notes three and four, note three is that all site construction shall be in conformance with MDEP stormwater VMPs. And number four is the site contractor shall be a certified contractor under the MDEP shoreline rules.
Yeah. So uh, that was one of the questions I had earlier. I didn't notice that you didn't uh, uh, provide the contractor certification number. Um, in the end, when we get done dealing with this project, it'd probably be a condition that that be provided to Gary prior to construction.
Okay. And, and that's fine. Um, so that's all of those highlights. The one last thing where you were talking with Adam about the height limitations.
If we were, you were listening in.
I was.
You heard that, that's definitely, okay.
Um, if you could go to the first page of Matt Marn, the Hammond lumber building plans. Um, the upper right, the north elevation. And, and that does show what I described as far as the roof water. You can see the left hand portion, that's two-story portion does all slope away, that's away from the lake to the left. And then the one-story portion of the house is actually gonna be a deck up there, but the roof slopes toward the lake. So that's why we're collecting the water the way we are. On the back of the building, on the left-hand side. Matt Marn shows the twenty-five feet up to the highest point of the roof. What we did was we took the lowest elevation. We didn't even take the mean, which we could gain a little, but we took the lowest elevation at the front of that two-story section. And on the site plan, that's the northwest corner of the two-story section of the new house. So we'll conform with that twenty-five feet. On the front portion, the one-story, um, the twenty feet's not labeled, but it's, it's much less than twenty. And again, there. And I guess, and actually what we should do is submit a revised plan from Matt Marn that actually shows that height on the front. And that'll include the deck railing as well, going from the lowest existing point at the ground, which is the northwest corner of the one-story. Will be less than twenty feet to the top of that deck railing. And we'll submit a plan. Rich, that shows that twenty foot or shows what that dimension is, is being less than twenty feet. So maybe along with the um, contractor certification. We'll submit that as well, just so you'll have it in your record.
I, I got a question, if you will. Um, I wanna make sure your understanding, our thoughts on height of a structure is that uh, you'd be looking at the measurement from the main original grade on the downhill side of the structure. Um, it looks like the twenty-five foot that you have shown to the peak of the roof is measured from not the um, water side lowest point, but from the essentially the lowest side of the main big structure.
Yes.
The measurement, as I see it, should have been measured from uh, the front of the one story up to the peak. I guess what I what it looks to me is that there's, there's additional height that isn't under the definition of the additional height that isn't shown toward the height of this structure. Does that make sense? So George or Sarah, do you, are you seeing the same thing I am?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that.
Yeah, no, I, I had the same question of, of what's and part of which is what's the height between uh, the uh, elevation of the bottom of, I guess it's a retaining wall or underneath the deck there to the uh, beginning of the first, to the deck floor.
Um, George, would you take the elevation at the front of the deck or at the front of the one-story structure?
Um, hmm.
I, I would.
Which one's lower?
Um, the front of the deck, I can, I've got the site plan on a screen, so I can read all these numbers. The um, front corner of the deck is at elevation two fifty-three, the ground. And that is the lowest point of the deck. Actually, if we get, if we did a mean, the other corner is a foot highest, but in round numbers. Um, it's two fifty-three. The corner of where this two-story building starts is two fifty-six and a half. So that's three and a half feet. The ground is three and a half feet higher. So if you subtracted that, I guess that interpretation would mean that that roof peak would need to be three and a half feet lower.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, so the way we looked at this and as we reviewed it going through everything with the feeders and Gary and this, this of course, not two separate buildings, but the, the one story is at least distinctive from, um, and we, that's why we took the interpretation of, I guess you can understand.
Three structures.
Why we use the ground elevation at each structure and then measured up from there or at each from the one story, we measured up there from the ground and the two-story, we measured up from the ground at the two-story. Just so and you could tell from that building elevation. But yes, that's exactly what we did to come up with the plan we have.
Yeah, I, I question, certainly I think that we've got to take the measurement from the uh, front of the one-story, if not the deck, but uh, I guess I'd we, I'd ask the other board members uh, how they're thinking on this.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Rich. The uh, I, I um, and it, if I understood what you were just telling us Elliot, there's a one-foot difference in elevation between those two points.
Between, no, George, between the deck and the front corner of the proposed cottage, there's one foot difference. Is that what you meant?
Uh, yeah, I guess so. Uh, let me ask another question, cause it would help me clarify my own thinking. The retaining wall that's shown underneath the uh, deck that is most closest to the, the lake. Um, the uh, I can't quite tell from the profile, uh, is that is that basically rectangular or is that? I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is it basically follow the um, uh, perimeter of the uh, lowermost deck?
The proposed deck, yes. Oh, do you mean at the, at the south side of the proposed deck?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an, oh, yeah, and that isn't labeled. That's an existing retaining wall.
That's an existing retaining wall?
Yeah, that, that's, that, um, it's not colored in. It's just got the lines a couple.
Actually, now that I look at the west elevation, I, I see the answer to my question. Um, so I would, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, it, it's, but the ordinance talks about the uh, maximum height. Um, and using the mean elevations, um, you know, it, it, I would say it's from the, uh, it, looking at the west elevate, elevation drawing, um, the uh, you know, it's from the base of the um, posts to the peak of the roof.
That's how I see the definition reading myself. I, I agree with that. Cause they're all part of the same structure. Everything's one structure. And it says the mean original grade on the downhill side of the structure. One thing I would point out, I would make it, what Elliot know that I'm thinking this is not a uh, uh, simple project and I think that it would make sense for the board to uh, visit the site uh, before making any final decision on this project anyway. Again, that's my thought. I don't know what other people are thinking.
Now, uh, I don't know what you have in mind for the uh, architecture of the structure Elliot. But uh, rather than our previous uh, application, this one is a lot easier to fix. Cause I'm not sure how much you can, I mean, I'm, I'm not a house designer, but the roof line, it would be a matter of just changing the roof line to um, to compensate for the extra three feet that you had to shave out. Um, it's a lot less complicated to change and to conform, but why, I guess you were mentioning in your application that there are three structures here. The, the house is one and then we're talking about the sheds are diff, are this, why are the two structures?
The, the existing camp is one.
Yeah, so the six, the existing camp is right in the middle or in the back?
Um, the existing camp is about where the new one's going, but it's further to the north. Can you see those green lines, Sarah? And it says existing camp?
I have, I have only black and white here.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, but I'm looking, I'm looking at the, at the plan that has the uh, east be elevation and the north elevation.
Oh, oh, okay.
The south and the west. So, so you're building on top of existing camp? Or is this the existing camp in the middle of, when you look at the north elevation, is this the existing camp right in the, the, it's smack in the middle and then you add in the back and then the porch to the front? I missed that part of the discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay, if you look at the north elevation.
Yeah.
Um, Sarah, the existing camp is toward you and a little to the right. So the
So you see the, the way we measure, what we consider height is going to the closest point to the shore. So I understand. And then picking the lowest point closest to a shore and then picking toughest of the structure. Is that right, Rich?
Uh, yeah, I was actually looking at trying to figure out something, uh, the site plan uh, that he had shown and I'll get back to your question in a minute. The site plan shows the dashed lines of where the existing structure is. It's kind of like uh, somewhat overlaying the uh,
The old one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a top view. Yes, I see that.
Yeah.
Uh, but for some reason, because he's saying that he's uh, removing and re-adding. So I was thinking that somehow the old structure somehow was gonna be retained a portion of the house, like a part of a cake. It's all blended in.
Yeah, no, there's no portion of the other structures remaining at all, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's tearing down and then rebuilding entirely.
So when you, uh, Elliot, then when you talk about three structures, the house is one structure.
Um, do you mean existing structures? Or, or proposed, there's just gonna be the new house and we're moving the woodshed back a little bit. So there'll be just two structures, uh, well, and then the T house.
T house.
So there's, actually those are the three existing, the T house at the water, the existing camp. And then the tool shed slash woodshed. So we're tearing down the existing camp and replacing it. The T house at the lake is remaining. And we're just moving the shed back toward Burton Woods Road a little bit. So there's existing three and there's proposed three.
See, cause in that north elevation view, it's almost like you have three distinct structures bonding together.
Oh.
So that, so when, when he, we're talking about the elevation and talking, talking about the section of the elevations. Uh, I said, well, you know, we're decomposing this structure. Maybe we can look at the rule differently, but the house is one entity on its own. And, and the way I, I see it, I, I see the beginning where the, the zero, the ground zero starts for me is right in front of the porch where that person is looking towards great pond, right underneath that post. She, she's walking in the, in the, in the, in the deck or he's walking in the deck. You gotta look at the deck and go right to the bottom of the post from that corner there to the tip top of the roof is where I will measure the height.
And that, Sarah is what I would say as well. Um, anyway, go ahead, uh, Elliot, if you had.
No, I was just gonna say, I think the, the board is all in agreement on that, just your discussion. So um, unless there's any way we can find and convince the board of another interpretation, which I wouldn't be too hopeful on. Um, I think we've got to look at redesigning this and measuring the twenty-five feet from that front corner of the deck that Sarah was just describing.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, with, with one exception, there is, um, and you can't see it, but going across the front of the proposed deck, the the northwest corner is what Sarah's looking at and which is fifty-one feet from the shore. The northwest corner is what Sarah is looking at and which is fifty one feet from the shore. The southwest corner is the ground is actually one foot high or I can see my contours. So I guess in we'd be. Go, we'd be using that mean, I think is the way you've described it. I take the northwest corner, the southwest corner and take the the mean of that.
Right.
Yeah.
George, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, it's a question for you, Rich, principally possibly Sarah too. I I just want to make sure um this. Uh I understand because um. This is a nonconforming structure, it will be more not more less nonconforming. Uh than it currently is uh than the existing camp based on the proposal. Uh in terms of the distance from the normal high watermark, but um. It's still gonna be a nonconforming structure, so which section of the ordinance applies here? Is it fifteen for? Prin uh a- a- as if this was a new structure? Or uh the nonconforming structure section? Uh in twelve, where you know, the height is based on the distance from from the lake? My initial. Explain that clearly?
I I think so, but my initial thinking is that I would treat this as a new structure. Uh let me ask Elliot a question, what's the height of the existing structure that you're gonna tear down? Do you know?
No, I don't, but we'll measure that certainly.
I I would say, one of the things that I was thinking is. If your existing height of the structure uh is twenty seven feet. Uh which probably isn't, but if it's twenty seven feet, um. Pardon me?
Can be grandfathered?
I still didn't catch.
Can it can it be grandfathered?
Oh, well, the height, if it, I would say that the height of the existing structure was twenty seven feet. I think we could approve the new structure being twenty seven feet, not being any. More nonconforming than the existing structure, but like I said, if they're tearing it down, it's probably a. Small camp that's not very tall.
It's it's only one story.
Yeah.
It looked like from the photo.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, there's a photo there. Um but uh. I'm I'm thinking, my thought is that we treat it as a new structure for. That.
You guys got the better package, I don't have a picture.
Oh, that came uh with a couple of days ago. From, I think Sheila, it showed this revised site plan that Elliot sent in. And uh also had another picture showing uh aerial type photo showing the. Tea house, the house and the hill behind.
Yeah, it's actually a photo taken from the frozen lake uh towards shore showing the. The existing one-story camp with a fairly.
You guys, you guys are so active. In this board that is keep up, keeping up with all the emails is incredible.
Yeah, there are a lot of emails.
Unfortunately, a lot of the ones we've been getting have been junk, have nothing to do with anything.
Listen, I was not gonna say that, but.
We won't talk about that, though.
Oh, no.
Or we'll get ourselves.
We don't wanna raise that issue at all.
Yeah.
We made our decision. Anyway.
Getting back to my question, um as to what part of the ordinance applies here.
Yeah.
You know, the nonconforming structures section is the same section that we also find um. Provisions in for uh, you know, when you tear down a building, uh moving it back to the uh most practical extent.
Yeah.
And that and that's partly my confusion as to. Which height standard applies, because you know, is it a height standard for structures located within seventy five feet? That has also the uh, you know, limit on the total number of square feet.
Yeah.
So how how what what is the height for that seventy five feet back?
Uh it's twenty feet. It's I'm on page ten of the ordinance of anybody's. What's the law?
Well, the highest that we find the order ordinance is twenty five.
Yeah, a- a- and that. Seems to assume that you have a building that, I I may be wrong about this, but I read it to. Mean it it applies for a building. That is gonna be a hundred feet from normal high watermark. I'm not arguing vigorously that it should be. The height for the nonconforming structures, I I'm asking just a fundamental question because I want to make sure we get this right.
Um, and if I could just jump in for a minute, George, I think that's a good point because the. The height limitation of twenty feet is from twenty five to seventy five. The height limitation of twenty five feet is beyond seventy five. And this two-story section is all beyond the seventy five. If you look again, that setback label is a little hard to see, but.
Yeah.
That seventy five foot line, and that's right, I remember Gary when we were working with this, that's one thing we did. We made sure that the two-story section of the house was beyond the seventy five. Foot setback. And that's why then we use the twenty five feet, which is in the new state coordinates. Regardless of how exactly how yours reads.
Okay, so that that really makes my question sort of move.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but we should to discuss this uh at another planning board meeting when we get some chance. Uh and we're dealing with reconstructed structures, but oh, it's correct, it doesn't. Uh and you're you're correct, it makes it kind of moot for this application.
Yeah, it's twenty five feet, doesn't matter which section applies.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that explanation, Elliot.
The. Okay, so uh. What do you want to do, Elliot?
Whatever the board recommends, well, um.
My, I've got two, not two suggestions, but two thoughts, uh and maybe there are two suggestions is. I I would think that the best way for us to deal with this, again, it's just like Adam's thing. I I hate to push things back, but uh we did get to you anyway. But my thought here is to. Uh one, I I would like to have a site visit so that we can all see what we're dealing with in terms of. And one, one, the uh. You know. S- see the features being there. Uh the other thought is. I think it it's probably best to go back and. Based on our discussions today, revamp what's being proposed so that we can. Basically prove it the way the way you come back with it. Other board members have any thoughts?
I'm just wondering, so. Yeah, I I I think a site visit is necessary, uh um for me anyway, uh. Although uh the argument that or the what Elliot presented seems pretty fairly compelling. Uh typically, when we have this whole issue of has a existing nonconforming camp been moved back from the lake? To the most practical extent, we do a site visit just to verify that. Uh so that that would be my justification for doing a site visit, um.
That's pri- primarily mine, too.
I I do, uh but once we get done with this, Rich, I I I still have uh. They're relatively minor in the bigger scheme of things, because they're not. Um questions, but um I do have a couple additional clarifications. I wanted to get from Elliot when it's appropriate. Um Sarah.
All I'll say is that uh uh Elliot, I I give kudos to you, this uh the drainage in this uh. Site plan is uh is one kind of architectural thing, Don, done a great job with that. It's just uh um we have to measure every project with the same rule, you know? And uh you you were, you saw what was going on with Adam Garner here. We have to stick by that and that um. Other than that, it have been just uh, I mean, I wish you can put all your explanation in writing like like you walk us through. Because it was absolutely fantastic. The only, I'm not sure that. Taking consideration all the things that have been moved around, I think you mentioned you're gonna do it well.
Yes.
And you're gonna you're gonna uh move the septic and there was all that, all this kind of things going on. I wonder if there have to be a a specific uh step protocol and. And when you do the well and and gonna do a septic, if there have to be a span of time in between the two events. Because uh one can affect the other. Um so I. Just for your own uh safety and the safety of your of your clients. I would have put together a master plan where all these things are happening in a sequential way. That one doesn't affect the other. And you did a great job explaining everything that was going on that. But as you going along, it was like cooking a uh putting a meal together. And I said, gee, you know, you don't want to put the croutons too early before the dressing. Uh or with the dressing because it's gonna go soggy, so uh it is my kitchen uh metaphor to why you were. Putting all together and and this seems to be a great project and it's gonna be a beautiful home. For somebody, whether it's only summer or year round and uh. Uh we don't want to mess the waters with the septic or anything like that, I just uh. I don't know the procurements and all the uh safety measures you guys take when you do construction. Our job is only give you to give you the permit to get what you want done in the lake.
The uh just Sarah, there are specific requirements for distances of wells from septic. At at last I knew when I was at DEP or something that there was. A how could, there was a limit on how close you could put your septic to a well, but there wasn't any. The other way around or something, is that still true? Or was I never right?
Yeah, no, no, that's true, that's still, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, that's still true in the plumbing code, uh. And you may recall, that was an issue with the Jones application.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And uh. And also the separation uh is not only. Uh linear lateral distance, it's also uh uh it can be the distance um. Taking into account the depth of the well.
The depth of the casing.
The casing, excuse me.
Yeah, the more casing, the the more you can, the less you can set back the well if you need to.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Let me, George, you wanted to bring up a couple of other issues.
Yeah, um Elliot, the um one thing uh I noticed. As a result of the photograph uh comparing it to the um site plan is that. I I on the on the on the photo, I don't see a an existing set of steps in the front of that camp. And there is an existing set, there is a set of steps proposed. On the front of the uh new camp. It, am I correct or am I wrong?
Um, we show the new steps, the old, the existing steps are shown as well, and they're just sort of faded back. But if you look at the photo, the existing steps are just to the right of the existing camp. Um if, I don't know if you can blow that photo up.
No, I I I see what you mean, uh it's, oh, okay, okay, uh I'm I got. Disoriented in terms of where the uh existing camp is relative to the proposed camp. Uh that answers my question, because I'm a little concerned about new stairs making the structure more nonconforming. Uh and relative to its distance uh to the lake, but that that's not an issue. Um, the other question I had, uh well, I have several, um the uh, I assume the. Erosion control berm, that's just temporary. Is that correct?
Yes, and and actually, um I didn't mention that, you've noticed that's a double line. So because of the proximity of the lake, instead of just putting in one berm of erosion control mix, there'll be two. And that's typical on a lot of projects that we work on, when you get close, you should double it up. So that's what's shown and proposed here, and actually the note does say that, double erosion control mix burn.
It does, thank you, um yeah, no, that's great, uh the. The uh retaining wall that's um up the slope from the camps uh and uh. And uh. Uh is that uh existing?
Yes, and deteriorating, well, I say it's existing, it's now buried.
Okay.
That's that's to be, it's still layer, but it won't be used or visible anymore.
Okay.
It was like a railroad tie or just a tim- a wooden timber retaining wall.
Um and then my last question has to do with the um plunge pool uh to the sort of. That north corner and the underdrain that goes to that, I I didn't quite catch what hap- when you explained earlier. Where that water will be coming from, is it the water, is that gonna be receiving the water? That uh goes into the uh drip line um uh trench. And discharging into that plunge pool, or did I misunderstand?
No, that's correct, and so not only is it the water that's going through that roof drip line. Infiltration filter. It's all of the foundation drain around the entire building. And that foundation drain is part of the roof drip line infiltration. Because that's what's at the bottom of it, is the underdrain, and then also that drain that extends south. I called it a French drain, I should call it something else, but anyway. That that underdrain is also gonna be connected, so all of the underdreams around the building and running to the south. Will go through that underdrain toward the lake and into a plunge pool.
My concern is, and and this in part, um is just a a function of. Not having ever built one of these myself, um. I I'm a little concerned about diverting so much, with some portion, I don't know what portion of that stormwater. Closer to the lake. Rather than infiltrating it into the ground. Now, maybe I I have the wrong end of the stick here, but uh it, based on what you just described. You know, we have uh those two underdrains receiving the discharge water from um. Uh the uh drip line uh infiltration trenches. Uh the and the perimeter drains and I assume some of that infiltrates, but I assume some of it doesn't. And consequently, it's a, you know, discharge closer to the lake, particularly the plunge pool.
And and it is, that's correct, um the the rationale behind it is that the water that is being discharged. Is filtered or cleansed, at at worst, it goes down through a five-foot depth of crush. a five-foot depth of crushed stone. So it, it does infiltrate when it can along its route to that outlet. But the conditions now, and actually in your site visit, you'll see it. It's without that underdrain, what's happening is the water's, when it gets wet, it's just sitting on top of the ground. And that just runs sheets directly into the lake. It doesn't infiltrate. So I think this is a big improvement because it filters it. And the way it works now is when the water runs across the lawn, it's taking silt and and whatever into the lake. So I think it's better to put it into the ground. And even though it does not all infiltrate, at least it's purified or cleaned. And there isn't any silt going into the lake from that water like there is on the existing condition.
Right.
With this project, that's the part that, uh, the just, the the outlier or whatever, uh, is where you need to get a DEP permit by rule, uh, for the waters that come through here?
No, um, we'd need one anyway, um, when you're doing any construction within a hundred feet of the lake.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
So this'll just be included in that application for a permit by rule.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The filtration media that or maybe it's just crushed rock. How effective is that in absorbing phosphorus?
I'd say it's not.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. I I mean, I know we're not talking about phosphorus control here, we're talking stormwater and 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 rightly or wrongly, the shore shoreline zoning ordinance doesn't address phosphorus runoff.
No, it doesn't.
Uh, that's my questions for now, Rich. I I I gotta look at the, uh, stormwater, uh, standard just to make sure I'm not missing something, but, um.
Got a question out of curiosity here. Uh, so is that, uh, the rain there, the underland that rains clay? Elliot, do you know?
Um, Sarah, could you repeat that?
Is it, is the, is the, the, the rain there where you're gonna be building on top? That where you guys are experiencing that as as the the rain comes down and just she shits in into the into the lake, it's almost like a, runs like a river on top of the ground instead of infiltrated down. Uh, is that, is that terrain clay?
I I think it's a clayey soil and it's, and I know it's hard glacial till when you go down below the topsoil and that clay stuff. But I think it's, um, it in August, that front lawn dries up. But you're gonna see, and I haven't been there lately, but I can predict it. When we go out, you're gonna see that this whole front lawn is just spongy. So the water, I'm sure it's infiltrating some, but not much. Most of it's running off. And it's not like a stream or anything, because it's still going through the grass. But it's just very spongy and the water goes toward the lake.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm originally from the Caribbean and, uh, the house, the roof of the houses there, they're not tilled, they're flat. And what people do there is that they use the flatness of the of the roof and they put a niche around it and they tilt the roof so it will collect all the water and go what to what they call water boxes. So we, we never add a water, we have potable water or we have water in our water boxes. And the water box literally is a, is a, is a, uh, cement box raised up in into the air in four corner pillars. And then they closed the four corner pillars and they made a bathroom there. I have, my mom had one in her house, now it's in my house. And, uh, it's very interesting how people manage water different places.
Yep, George.
Uh, just, uh, for clarification, and and this is what I was trying to look up, because I I couldn't remember, uh. So E- Elliot's right, the, uh, in terms of, you know, what the objective is here. It's to minimize the stormwater runoff from its current conditions in or pre-development, if this was a virgin site, it's not. So, you know, by reducing the amount of overland flow, uh, reaching the lake, uh, this, you know, meets that stormwater standard.
Yeah, okay. So let's, uh, try to somewhat wrap things up in terms of, I see there's two, two issues here. Uh, main issues, and and one of them is a site visit. And it, based on your comment, Elliot, I guess you're not opposed to a site visit, uh, something you said that at the site visit, you'll see. The, uh, the other issue is making sure that this structure uh, is gonna meet the height limitations of the ordinance and, um, I other than, like I said, getting a site visit and the bearings and uh, I don't know if there's really a whole lot more than seeing what's going on, understanding what's going on and and making sure that, uh, this, uh, revised structure is within the height limitation. Would you agree, George?
Yeah, no, I do, uh, so, you know, um, really, for me, the site visit, other than just ge- generally, you know, getting a feel for the site versus the site plan, although this is a very good site plan and and it doesn't leave much to the imagination, um, the, uh, uh, I would just want to verify myself, uh, whether you know, the location of the proposed camp, or at least the current proposed location, uh, you know, kind of meets that general standard or judgment call of, you know, has been moved back from the lake to the most practical extent, um. The, um, there's really not much we can do about the height at this point in time, but, uh, if we do the site visit, uh, well, I was just thinking, um, I mean, basically, we we would, I guess, looks like the step of path forward here is to table this pending a site visit and a revised plan um, or a profile plan and, um, bringing that back. Um, and, you know, I almost think, although this makes a little bit more work for you, Elliot, uh, it would be good, uh, to have the full board hear this, just because of, uh, um, it isn't a matter of rule or anything like that, uh, it's more a matter of, um, there's a judgment call here in terms of that, uh, is a gray area in terms of whether or not a camp has been moved to back to the maximum extent po- uh, practical. And it would seem to me it'd be fairer if, to the applicant, if the full board was hearing that rather than just the three of us. Not that, I don't know.
Yeah. I guess my, my thought on that, George, uh, well, what what I was initially thinking is we do a site visit. I guess if we're gonna go that way, we'd want the full board to participate in the site. Because they wouldn't be any better off than we are right now if they didn't go. Uh, the other thing is if the site visit revealed to the three of us that, uh, clearly, this is as far back as it can go or oh wait, can't you move this whatever, um, back another five feet, uh? But we won't know that till we visit, so, uh, if, I guess my thought probably is to invite the full board to the site visit and have them be part of the whole process. Um, it's either gotta be one or the other. It's if we go visit, we make the decision or, uh, we, we can't have a a blending, I guess.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right, um, but that was sort of failed logic on my part. The, uh, you're right, we either, uh, do the site visit, the three of us, and then, you know, the decision is our, our ju- uh, can only involve the three of us at a future board meeting. And or the full board gets involved almost like starting over, really.
Yeah, yeah, uh, my, my thinking is that I'm not su- well, put it this way. I don't think the rest of the board would be upset if we dealt with this. Um, and I'm thinking, do we want to spend another two hours or hour and forty-five minutes going over the same thing we've already gone over? Uh, I, I, I personally think we, we can take care of this.
Yeah, we probably can. I guess I'd be interested in your thoughts, though, Elliot, you know, maybe you have a preference, um.
Um, well, my preference goes along with what Rich just said. I think, um, you three board members are now familiar with the plan, everything that's been submitted. So, um, so if it would be nice to to continue with
Okay.
three members and do the site visit with you three and then a final meeting, the same.
Okay.
Hey, the
The, the only other thing that I have in my notes here that we should add is the, uh, we need a contractor certification number. Somehow I have that here, my notes.
That, that, the, uh, uh, DEP certified person, is that what you're referring to?
I I wrote it down, I said, I need a contractor certification number. Need to provide that before contract construction starts.
Yeah, yeah, that would be something, if it's not shown on the application at this point, we'd have a condition that Elliot provided to Gary prior to the start of construction.
Okay. But not, not needed for approval, the, uh, of the, uh, board.
Okay. Um, so it looks like we're gonna do a site visit and uh, entertain a motion to, at some point here, to table the, uh, application, uh, until such time as we've had a site visit and, uh, Elliot's had a chance to revamp, uh, his, uh,
Building plan.
Building plan, yeah, I guess that's a good way to do it. Anyway.
Do you want to decide now on, on a date for the three of us to go out?
I guess it make, it makes sense to me since Elliot's here and the three of us are here.
Yeah, I I need to go get my calendar. I I didn't think to bring it.
All right. Grab that.
I'll be back in a sec.
George has a busier calendar than I do.
I was gonna say something about it. How you get me working with my calendar next to you?
My calendar is, uh, more adapted to knowing when my next doctor's appointment is.
Come on. I bet that Mrs. Baker have you very busy in that calendar, too.
Yeah, yeah, uh, she, her calendar is completely full all the time.
Okay, I'm all set, Rich.
Okay, um. Well, I guess we probably don't want to pass too much time here before we do it, uh, um. Are there days, let's say this, what days are out for people? Um, say over the next week and a half or something, or next week.
I would like it not to be the twenty-eighth. I have a school board meeting that day. Or the, or or the fifth of May. Other than that, you tell me.
You say the sixth or the fifth?
The, the, the fifth of May.
Okay.
The sixth, we're meeting again.
Yeah, yeah, we hopefully can get a site visit in before then.
And that's what I, what I'm trying to say, we should do before then.
Yeah.
On, uh, uh, pretty much next week, uh, with the exception of Monday to twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay. Uh, we want to do this, uh, with Elliot. Uh, what is most convenient for you in terms of day versus afternoon or early evening?
Um, well, I, early evening in general, but, um, I'm flexible. The one day that I'm not is next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, I'm not available.
Okay.
But most of my other stuff is flexible.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Um. What, could we do it maybe on Tuesday? And I don't know what the people are thinking in terms of timeframe. Uh, I know Elliot liked to have it early evening. If we do it early evening, what constitutes early with supper and stuff like that? Uh, would you rather do it, uh, kind of before supper time or after supper time? And then it's like, what time is supper time? But, uh,
What, what works for you, Elliot?
Oh, if we're talking afternoon, early evening, say three o'clock and after, I can be there.
How about Tuesday at three o'clock? Now, Sarah?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay.
Yep, that works for me.
Okay. Next Tuesday at three o'clock, that fits in.
We, we're meeting at the location of the, uh, uh, that the application says.
Yes, yes, uh, and, uh, if you know where Burton's Woods Road is, uh, we can easily find it. I, uh, yeah, actually, we got the, the, I don't know if Elliot's plan, yeah, it does have, uh, uh, he's, he supplied the map and lot number of the, the site and, uh, he's got a map and lot number, uh, or town tax map included in the application, I believe.
Yeah, we got, we got, I GPS it, we'll find him.
All right. And actually, go ahead, George.
I was just gonna ask what the parking situation was down there in terms of cars and all that, but.
Well, one thing I was gonna suggest is that if people wanted to come to my house, uh, George and Sarah, not that, oh, it, you, you know the site better, uh, but anyway, I, for the planning board members, not that I want to keep you out of this, out of my car, Elliot, but, uh, I could, uh, this, uh, we could come in one vehicle and meet at my place and head out from here.
And and you can, there'll, there's room to park four or five cars, not on, all on this property, but I know some of the neighbors that are in Florida and we can park in their parking lot, so there's plenty of room.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, either planning board members, uh, go to the site or go to my house and we'll drive over together.
Well, I will go to your house.
Yeah, I I will, too.
I know, George, we're, we're, uh, uh, Sarah, you had your vaccine?
Yeah, oh, God. That, that might be a problem. I don't have a vaccine.
Uh, I personally
Forget about that.
All right.
Well, I will meet you guys there then, because you have a vaccine now, do you?
Yeah, I, I'm vaccinated, yep.
Yeah, so you two can travel together and I meet you there then.
Okay, sounds good.
The one benefit of being an old fart.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, so we'll meet, uh, next Tuesday at three A, three P M at, uh, at the site. And, uh, secondly, we need to deal with the application, uh, as of right now. Um, do we have any motions, uh, regarding, uh, uh, what to do with the application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the application pending a, a site visit and, um, uh, a revised, um, plan.
Okay.
In that
Uh, okay, we got a motion, a second, uh, Sarah, since you seconded it, you're probably, well, what's your vote? Sarah, since you seconded it, you're probably, well, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, yes, as well. Three, nothing. We've voted to table the application. Uh, Elliot, we we've got to see the site and everything, but you're also uh, gonna be working on some modifications. How much time do you think you will need before you're uh, prepared to come back to us? I I know it's gonna be after the site visit.
Yeah, and I and Rich, it's really gonna be up to the owners, my clients. I gotta go over this with them. Uh, but I think I don't, I know your schedule is totally booked. But if we do the site visit next week and if there was a slot available at the next meeting, I can be ready.
Okay. I'll leave that up to Anthony and Gary or whatever to I see Anthony's name showed up. Were you gonna say something?
Yes, Rich, I was just gonna say, I think our plan should be that on the May sixth agenda, we have Mr. Gardner's application again.
Yeah.
Uh, that should be pretty quick work.
Yeah, yeah, it will be.
And then go ahead, Sarah.
I mean, I I I keep talking, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then and then I don't see if Mr. There is gonna be ready. I don't see any reason why we should delay on that one. Go ahead and get that one. You know, through the pipeline and then and then maybe we'll have one of our pending commercial development review applications because I'm I'm assuming that now that you guys have been through Mr. Thayer's application, that won't be a heavy lift on the sixth. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I think if we can, personally, I think if we can come up with, if we agree on the current layout or whatever, when we do the site visit uh, and Elliot can deal with the uh, owners and maybe revamping the elevation or whatever. Uh, I don't think it'll take a long time after that if we we can cover these issues.
Yeah, Mr. There, are you are you agreeable to that?
Yes, I am.
All right, yeah. Anthony, obviously, our site visit will have to be advertised or notified, notice.
Absolutely. We will post notice since there will be a quorum of the board there gathered together.
Yeah, um, and you you have any thoughts or Gary, do you have any thoughts about how best, now that we got two applications on the fifth that only the three of us can vote on? How to proceed with that? I mean, have the others start half an hour later or just have them sit there or what?
Well, I think I think what we'll do, George, is simply let the other board members know that we're gonna address these two things first because we don't think it's gonna take a whole lot of time. And, um, you know, you guys have already dealt with it, so they're not really going to be able to engage in any sort of the discussion or the or the vote. Uh, and then we'll move directly into one of our commercial development review applications. So and if they want me to, I'll I'll do the same thing as I offered to do for Mr. Thayer here. I'll be happy to text them whenever we're ready for them to join the meeting.
Yeah, I I either way, it's fine with me. I I just I I don't want, um, I I if we're clear to the other board members that, you know, just twiddle your thumb for a little bit. Um, don't come jumping in. Um, that'll be fine.
Yeah, we'll we'll definitely make it clear sort of with the plan.
Well, good. For a second, can I jump in?
Yeah.
When was Adam expecting to come in again after that one we just tabled?
May, May sixth, wasn't it?
Yes, I I told I told him, Gary, that we would we would have him under old business and we'll have Mr. Thayer under old business as well on the May sixth agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Yeah, and I think particularly, uh, hopefully, Mr. Thayer's application will go quickly too, but can imagine we spend more than ten or fifteen minutes on Adam Gardner's project. All right. Do we have any other business?
Then, Rich, I'll sign off. Thank you. See you next Tuesday.
Okay, good, Elliot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot.
Do you have anything for us, Gary? Or probably unless it's very important, we can wait until the full board is here to get an update.
Yeah, I got something important. I gotta leave right now and head to Sydney to work.
I I've got to get to uh, Fairfield by five, so.
Okay.
We do, we do, hey, Gary, you hit you go on and head off to Sydney, but you the you other three characters. Uh, we still have a minutes from the last special meeting.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Anyway.
Thanks. Thank you, Anthony. Have is Sarah, have you had a chance to read those?
I honestly didn't. I forgot. I totally forgot about it. I concentrated on reading all the applications and getting that. Just that, but I'll do that very quick.
Okay.
I I think it was, I think it was just one page.
It was. There were just the two shoreline zoning permit applications that we dealt with.
Looks good to me.
George, are you ready?
Uh, I am. Uh, I had a comment, but I can't find I got lost amongst all the paper here. The and and my comment, I I can't tell you precisely where it's located in the minutes was just the something to note that you were acting as acting chair.
No. All right. How with the best to say we approved the minutes, but with the with the modification that I was acting chair during a meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Can relay that to Sheila, not Sheila.
Yes, Julie will be watching this video for for the preparation of the minutes.
Okay, boy, she has to sit through three hours to come up.
Oh, God.
Anyway, all right. Do I have a motion regarding the minutes?
No, go ahead.
I moved to approve the minutes while adding that Mr. Baker was the sheer sheer person for that meeting.
I second.
Okay, all those those in favor, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me, yes. So we completed our agenda for today. Do we all want to end the meeting or do we want to talk for another hour? Take a motion.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right. All those in favor, put your hand up. Re-voting affirmative. We will see you on Tuesday evening at Tuesday afternoon, three o'clock.
All right, thanks.
And hopefully, that won't be a three hour meeting.
So, Rich, I'll I'll meet at your house like a half an hour before that?
You can come anytime you want. This means where it's at least fifteen minutes before that.
That sounds like you guys excluding me out of a party, you know?
You can come join us.
You don't want me there because I'm not seen.
Actually, my my thought is we're both vaccinated. Doesn't matter what you got, so you you might.
No, we want it. We want to play it. We want to play safe.
Yes.
All right.
Site, thanks.
Okay, we'll see you next week.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you all for your time and your service. This is really helpful in helping to clear the backlog.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your help, Anthony.
I wonder how many.